Oh, thank you, because everybody must hear my voice. It's officially official. Calling the South Kingstown School Building Committee meeting to order Thursday, July 10th at 8:32. So, open the meeting with roll call. We have John Gould.
Here.
Dave Palazzini.
Here.
Michael Pedraza.
Here.
Kate Massenanti, I'm here. Luke Murray.
Here.
Chip McGeare.
Here.
Terry Lynch.
Here.
And Brian Sylvia.
Here.
A couple folks are off on vacation as they have earned the right to take. So, item two, public correspondence. There has been no official public correspondence that has been addressed to the school building committee specifically. However, there has been some public correspondence that has forwarded through the chain of command through the community elected officials all the way up to RIDE about our project for Mr. Beasley. And so, I did want to acknowledge it with this body. I have not forwarded it to this body at this time, but I will share it. He has taken it to RIDE with claims that the project is not taking enrollment into accurate count, that the building itself is not adequately planned for, and again, with the geothermal component. All items that we've addressed has been asked and answered by our body, by council, by school committee, by project team. We will be discussing it, however, if it gets brought up at the town council meeting on Monday, the project team will be prepared to answer any questions, and I will be there as well to navigate. But, as far as this body is concerned, again, I'll share the information. I just haven't had the opportunity to do that just yet, but I did want to acknowledge it, and it will be addressed in Monday night's council meeting. If anybody has any questions about any of that? All right, so, we will move along to item number three, which is project estimate reconciliation update and/or recommendations. There we go. All right, we're in business. Good morning, everyone. Kate Turner with Left Field. So, we do have a big milestone in front of us today, as we've been reviewing our path to starting construction over the summer, particularly relating to our temporary roadway and enabling work to be able to get a lot of this work done over the summer prior to the first day of school. So, Gilbane has bid out the design package for the temporary road, primary power relocation, water relocation, some fencing, to be able to get this work set up as early as possible. So, we did receive bids in. We went through scope review process, clarified some information, added some missing information based off of the finalization of some of the layouts from Rhode Island Energy. We did get best and finals in yesterday, so I will say that it is a quick turnaround. So, Tony Morjita with Gilbane does have all of the information. I'll pass it off to him in a moment to be able to walk through the bids that were received and the bids that we're recommending. This also does include the butter survey for the surrounding homes and being able to do a visual survey of the conditions of the home prior to starting construction. Can I just ask a clarifying question for, just as far as the agenda goes? Will this update kind of include three, I'll say three, four, and five? So, project estimate reconciliation, pre-construction survey for a butter's site, enabling logistics and key dates, or will those be broken down? We'll start, we'll start one at a time. We'll start with just the contract enabling work, then we'll move into site logistics, and then, or sorry, and then we'll move into a butter survey, and then we can move into logistics. So, we'll keep it in order. Great, thank you. Yep. So, coming up, the remaining early bid package, we do still have out to bid. Those bids are starting to come in now, and will be coming in over the remainder of the week. Gilbane's team will do leveling work, will do scope reviews similar, meet with a lot of the bidders, be able to review their proposals, make sure they're complete and accurate and that they're qualified bidders. Gilbane will then get a best and final from those bidders, present that information to us, and we will be going in front of this body, I believe it's August 10th, and then August 12th for, it is not August 10th, August 12th for town council meeting for their approval of the early bid packages. So, that is, that's some of the immediate milestones we have coming up with our important early bid release work. I'll hand it over to Tony to talk through some of the numbers for the enabling work that we've received.
Sorry, I'm just typing the rate.
Nope. It's HTT. It changes.
See, there you go.
HTT.
Kate, while that's booting up, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is any of this expected to be on Monday night's council meeting?
Yes, so, we are anticipating the enabling package. We are requesting a recommendation for award of the enabling package. That will be in the format of recommendation to award letters, which will then be rolled into the GMP on August 12th.
Okay, so, it's not on the agenda as of this morning, and the agenda goes out today.
Okay.
So, I, you know, we need to talk after this meeting and coordinate to make sure that gets on.
Okay, yes, that's, that's the date we've been planning for this to be on the agenda, so it's an important item.
All right.
Yes.
And I'll share the RTAs right now that we'd like on the agenda. So, quickly, hopefully, people have seen this pretty picture before. The enabling we're looking to award is for the temporary road. Can you see my, yeah, you can see my cursor. The temporary road, and then really site setup, which is fencing around the new property. So, that's what the recommendation is that I'm gonna share here for you all to see. That's not it. That's not it. That's it. So, we did get four bids. We scoped all four, requested best and final. This is a draft of the recommendation to award that I'll be getting to Kate later this morning for inclusion on Monday evening's town council meeting. Our intent is to recommend JR Venagro for award for this enabling work. The scope is sort of represented on that pretty picture I just showed, and the values are there. There's a substantial amount of backup that goes with this RTA, but this is the critical component, the award value, the vendor, and they do have WBE participation in their award as well. Just for comparative purposes, all the way down at the bottom here, you can see our bid package estimate for this work is slightly under the value by about $5,000, but essentially what that tells us is the prices we received are in line with our DD estimate that we had done. So, I'll pause there. That's recommendation number one for the enabling work.
Did you meet with the bidders before? Is this like another, like you said, best and final?
This is their best and final number. We received bids. We did scope reviews with all four bidders. We sent out a post-bid supplement and requested best and final, and these are their best and final numbers.
Yeah, well done. They're really close, so it means they're all bidding on the same package.
They all are looking at the same scope.
Yeah, very good job on that.
Thank you.
My only question will be, like, so, the last time we went through, and this is on a different scale, but will they be able to meet the timeframe that we're looking at? Is that part of it?
Yes, so, their bid is representative of the timeframe we established from the 4th to the 29th. I do have a, I think later in the agenda, there's a logistics piece. I do have kind of a schedule that breaks it down a little bit for the timeframe between the 4th and the 29th, to show generally what the major activities are that will occur in that duration that this bid package is representative of. Any other questions before I go to the precondition survey, because it's the second RTA?
So, you said it was, it's 5,000 over our DD estimate, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you said it was under, but, I mean, that's still...
The estimate is 5,000 under, the low bidder.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, that's still very tight numbers. Like, this is incredibly close, so, well done.
I also wanted to add, this work has been submitted to RIDE through their expedited review portal. We are also meeting with them right after this meeting as a weekly, as part of our weekly check-ins to review this information, go through the scope of work again. We reviewed it with them last week as well, just to make sure that we are on the same path with our DD approvals and this early expedited review, to make sure that getting started in August won't be a problem.
So, the next thing I'm gonna share with you kind of addresses both three and four, because it is related to the precondition survey. It's actually an award to produce the precondition survey, so it addresses both. So, let me toggle to that RTA. So, this is a Google map of the properties that are, that were requested to conduct the precondition survey on. Generally, just so everybody knows, precondition survey is, is a series of mailers that goes out to the abutting properties highlighted within the red line to ask them if they would like a precondition survey done on their property. And then, a third party that we're recommending will come in and perform a precondition survey of their properties essentially to document existing conditions, so that should something occur during the construction, there's a documentation of its base condition, and if there's a change, we have a record that can prove if anything has happened subsequent to the survey. Any questions generally on what that is? So, in this case, we received two prices, one from Valvi and one from TER. We are recommending utilization of TER, which is not the low bidder, however, there is a reason for it. We have used both of these companies to do precondition surveys before, and TER provides a much more robust survey. Because your abutting properties are primarily residential, we believe the robust service is much more appropriate if they were, if they were industrial properties or other things. I do have plenty of projects that have such, and we do use Valvi primarily to do those, but TER provides a more robust service, so our intention is to recommend TER to survey those abutting properties. So, their value listed there, $77,512 is the recommended value for TER. And within the design development estimate, we have $100,000 budget for our precondition survey, so they are the low, well, not the low bidder. The bidder we are recommending is under our $100,000 budget. But again, really, the intention is because of the sensitive level of service and how critical this is, we are recommending TER for that service. So, I'll pause there.
Does, is that fee or that base bid is regardless of how many homeowners take advantage or do not?
Yeah, so, it's based on a ratio. They give us a price per property, and the intention is the property surveyed fit within the recommended value. It could be less, actually. If there are, if there are people who choose not to have their property surveyed, we do have the opportunity to lower that value.
Okay, so, that's based off of every property within that boundary?
Yep. Correct. Yep. Good question.
So, the project is at risk, though, for any damage done to those properties?
The, if, if the damage is proven to be done because of construction.
Correct.
And there is, and there are insurance protections that Gilbane holds for such events, so, it's sort of a loaded question, but the idea behind this is to document the condition that should someone experience an event and they believe it's related to the construction project, we have a documentation of their property, so that further investigation can be done to prove one way or the other. It really protects both parties, us, you, and the property owner on the adjacent property. That's the intention behind this survey.
Right, so, that was my point. So, obviously, the better detail we have, the better information we have going into any kind of arbitration.
Exactly.
But it protects not just Gilbane, but it also protects the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and it is being done via a third party who specializes in this. There's a reason why we're hiring a third party to do it, and we're not going to do it ourselves.
Just was making sure the town wasn't paying for your protection.
No.
No, they're protecting all of us.
Would the homeowners who take advantage of this get that report regardless, or only if?
Only if requested, right? We gather the data. They have the opportunity to request it, and it will be provided if requested, but otherwise, we'll retain the information. It's filed and kept with the project files, should it be necessary. If the homeowner chooses that they want to copy, they can request it, and it can, it will be provided by the third party, not by us or you, by the third party directly.
Thank you.
Yep, so, Kate, I would support the award to the more detailed survey.
Tony, just so, because this is likely to come up at council. What does that look like? A more thorough survey versus, you know, you're recommending the higher company, which understood. You're saying it's more detailed. In what way? Like, what makes that so much better?
Yeah, so, really, it's the series of outreach that they do to each individual property owner. I think there's three outreach points that we ask them to provide via certified mail, and then ultimately, not only is the exterior of the property surveyed via video and annotation, but the interior of the property is surveyed again by video and annotation. TER provides a very robust detail of that, and Valvi's review is more video evidence and a recording of it. It's not as detailed of a report. And again, because of the primary types of property that are surrounded, I believe that's the appropriate tool to have at our disposal should we all ever need it. It's really the short version. Yep.
The only question, I have a question.
Sure, of course.
So, clearly, people can choose or not.
Correct. They can opt in or out.
There may be, I kind of have a grasp on some of the folks, they may opt out.
Yes.
If they opt out of the, of the pre-construction survey process, but then come after the fact and say, "This was clearly caused, this damage was clearly caused by this project," what does that process look like?
Other than they are certainly entitled to do that, we just don't have that baseline information for them, and it just requires additional work on the, really, the insurance adjusters part to review and validate the claim. Traditionally, the, I'll say, the most common concern people have is vibration because of the work that we're doing. As part of the site work bid package, which is the early packages that are out to bid now, we do have vibration monitoring within that bid package, so that we do have a second level of defense that measures vibration in real time and monitors it, advises us if there's an exceedance, so work can stop immediately. And again, that's a secondary tool, that if there is a property that's not surveyed, we at least have the evidence that vibration has been monitored and hasn't exceeded the limits at the sight lines. So, there are, there are other measures should there be property owners that choose not to have their property surveyed.
So, at this time, for both of these agenda items, we would request a recommendation to bring these to council for approval. That's okay. We are requesting that both of these recommendations to award be recommended. We're asking for a motion from this council to recommend this to town council for the 714 meeting.
And it was Venagra for the first one?
I'm sorry?
Venagra.
Venagra.
Venagra. So, I'll make the motion to recommend award of Venagra and TER.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. We will make that recommendation for Monday night's meeting, the town council. Thank you.
Four-week look ahead.
Yeah.
So, the next item on the agenda has to do with sort of what's gonna occur prior to the opening of school, so we put sort of a quick, I'll call it a fragment, of the activities that are intended to occur really from August 4th right up until the start of school related to this early bid package that we're recommending for award at the town council meeting. You know, essentially, I won't read every line, but the thought process is, you go in, you do what I call clearing and grubbing of the area primarily where the new temporary road will go. It has to be excavated to provide a base. It has to be graded and paved. There's also some temporary electric work that has to occur during that timeframe, which is sort of listed towards the bottom. And then, finally, also occurring in that timeframe, sort of towards the last two weeks prior to the start of school, is the installation of the fence and the scrim, so that, again, when students and faculty arrive on the first day of school, the site is really set up of how they're going to experience it over the construction of the new high school up until turnover occurs, and we'll have a reverse process. But, so, this is really what that setup will look like over the next four weeks, starting at the beginning of August, and then the kind of the final activity at the bottom. And Phil is working on with, with Rhode Island Energy is the temporary electric tie-in. It's listed as TBD, because we don't have them scheduled yet, but the intention, obviously, is to get that done before school starts. I put it in the last week. It could very well occur pretty much anytime in there. They're a difficult party to nail down.
This is great, thank you. I guess it's more of a Kate question, but at some point in August, we, it would be possible to have like a graphic that shows parent drop-off, like the flow of traffic, the buses and everything, so we can start sharing that with families, because it is gonna be different.
Yes.
And I think actually, a better way, interestingly enough, I think this is actually gonna be better than our current traffic flow, but just to be able to share with families and say, "This is where you're dropping, picking up," et cetera.
Yeah, so, I think, Chip, we can make a modified version of this, clean it up, make it a little more presentable, and be able to utilize this. We can work together on putting together a flyer that can get sent out with first day of school info.
Thank you.
I think also having like the modified version of this, but then also kind of a zoomed in, just specific to the new, the new path, and then that front, because that is very important as well, and also making it very clear that the student parking, what that will remain looking like, because it's just, there are so many moving parts with the high school drop-off and pickups. So, just maybe like zooming in and making it clear what will remain the same, and then versus what is going to be new.
Just a clarifying question, too, is the bus loop, there will no longer be any, any staff parking in that bus loop, correct, for safety? It's not a lot of spots. I'm just asking for clarification.
So, we're still showing staff parking here? I would, I would, I think we can review that and confirm if we feel like that's still...
We can fit in the other lot if need be, but obviously, if we have additional parking, we're not gonna turn it down, but I just don't want it to be an unsafe situation.
Okay.
Is there any chance that on the 26th and 27th, that that student lot is not accessible as we host district-wide professional development at the high school? The student?
So, there...
The one in the back.
Yeah, so, we're not cutting, we're not cutting off access to that back and trends to the student parking. The only thing that we'll, we'll stay in close communication on is power shutdowns. So, there will be a shutdown period when they transfer the primary power over from the existing power to the temporary power, so we'll be in close communication as to what day that will occur on.
For the 28th or 29th, yes.
We have been asking Rhode Island Energy, you know, Luke has been involved, I've been involved, Phil's been involved. They've actually been great. They do have a very prescribed linear process for how things get approved and done, but they are aware of the importance of the shutdown duration being short and the, the work being scheduled as quickly as possible.
And potentially after business hours.
Yeah, and to that point, there's two agenda items on the upcoming town council agenda on Monday. One is to give the town manager authorization to approve all easement documentation. The other one is to, for, enable him to sign off on any service agreements and execute the construction portion of the contract. So, as soon as we get that documentation, we don't have to wait for another meeting. We can turn it around, and we can get it going, so we know that's a critical task, and we'll get it done. I did have one question, though, this is for school side. I'm seeing, obviously, the Hazard parking lot's gonna get cut off during construction, because it's, it's gonna need to be. I guess I'm pointing to them and saying, "Is that a problem?" Is there any?
No, I, we counted it out, because I can see the lines that they've already got in the parking lot. It's, it's gonna be about a dozen spots. It's, it's not gonna, and especially if we're keeping those spots in the bus loop, like we're, that's, it's not gonna be an enormous amount of spots. The part of the Hazard lot where, where this, where the line is, where the fencing's gonna be, it's in the new curb cut, it's not a lot of spots over there. They're more concentrated on the other side of the lot.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about what's gonna remain of the main parking lot in front of Hazard. That's like, you're gonna have site work going on, so you're not gonna be able to park there, so is there anything going on over the summer?
Like, access during the summer will be limited to that lot.
Because you're not gonna be able to get into that parking lot, or I don't, maybe you will, maybe you can speak to that.
No, no, you're, you're right. The access to that lot during the month of August will be difficult, just because we have to build that road and do that curb cut.
We just talked tech stuff that would be affected at that point.
So, we'll just have to make them aware that they'll have to park in the Columbia Street lot for that, for that time being, and then, once the squealer resumes, they can go back to parking in their spots, so we'll just have, we're actually meeting with Doug at Hazard today, anyway, we can make him aware, so he can share that information. The other thing that, that I was thinking about, too, is I know we have a plan for Chartwell's for their deliveries, because they're gonna lose their dock. Are they aware of that? Because that's, that's something that I just wanted to make sure that they're not shocked by it.
No, that they're not. I've already talked to Mark.
Yep.
He's not happy about it, but there's nothing he can really do.
Correct, so, we can be flexible in terms of where the deliveries get done and so forth, but, but we can meet with them, talk it over with them. There's other spots. We have a loading dock, a different loading dock that they could use, or depending on the deliveries, we had talked about using a different door that they could drop off, like during that temporary road, as long as it's not during bus times, like that, I'm sorry, parent drop-off pickup time, that would be plausible, too, so we can, we can work it through with them, but I think maybe that's something we need to get set up.
Yeah, I'd even talk to him to possibly maybe use in Broad Rock as a second site and then delivering as well, so...
Well, that's a good idea, too. Thank you.
Kate, is it safe to say all that field equipment needs to be off by August 4th?
Yes. Yes.
Johnny would put that on our 10 o'clock meeting.
The only other thing that I think just as a community we wanna keep front of mind is, right now, there's a lot of roadwork happening in this area, right? Kingstown Road, 108, which is Kingstown Road, but like, all the different ways you get to Kingstown Road. I got stuck in it myself yesterday, all along near Old Mountain Fields. It's gonna be wonderful, very exciting, but I just wanna make sure, like, this is another, like, we're kind of, it's the, it's like a grid around really our main center of town that has a lot of roadwork happening, and this is gonna be one more piece. Now, those other roads may be done by the time you start, because they're moving along pretty good, but I just wanna keep it in mind, just for the community at large, and maybe just kind of paying attention to, like, Lynch's, I don't do well with the setup of where we are spatially right here, but if I'm going up by like Liberty Liquor, up, up by Peace Dale School, like, it's all torn up, and so, this is just one more piece. Hopefully, like I said, they'll be done, and we'll be able to just move from there, but just kind of keeping it on our collective radar, because people will be mad.
The good news is a lot of that work is getting done in this month. So the paving that's going on now, which they've laid down the binder course, the top will be done soon. In front of Old Mountain Field, all of that, we've been notified that should be done this month. In addition, Route 138, my understanding is that within the next two weeks, the work's going to be done. There was a patch where we had done a sewer line, that's a town project that'll also be done. So by August, when you're really in full gear, a lot of that will be done and over.
And as far as roadway shutdowns for Hazard Lot, or access to Hazard Lot and power shutdowns, those dates, when we look at the four-week look ahead that Gilbane posted, you know, those aren't concrete dates where today we can count, this is the day it's going to be shut down, right? They kind of ebb and flow a little bit. So we'll stay in constant communication with the team to make sure that everybody that needs to know any access restrictions or power shutdowns is notified of the exact dates when they are nailed down.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns here? Alright, thank you. This is the big, big, we're taking big steps now, so thank you very much.
Yes.
So that will move us on. I've kind of put this on as a standing item. We may not have anything particular to talk about it right this minute, but I just want to make sure it stays front of mind. Discussion item number six, memorials and artifacts, inventory and planning. Chip, do you have anything you want to, any sort of update around that, or are we still kind of just in a wait and see?
So this is my suggestion. So I've done, I've asked a few people about the hazard field, and nothing has come back so far in terms of like memorial trees or things of that nature on that actual field. I still think we should do a walkthrough sooner rather than later, just eyes on, and any information someone else might have from, even from years ago, would be very helpful related to that, because that's obviously priority to take care of this month. As far as memorials within the building, I think we want to do a comprehensive look at that in the fall. What my suggestion to SLAM and to Studio Jade was, essentially, give us a space in the building that is going to be like dedicated to like, to memorials, and then what we'll do is, we'll, once we know all those things, then we'll figure out how to make all that fit in that particular space. So I think it's two parts to it. I understand what their concern was about not being, like not having enough space for it. My concern is, I don't want to miss anything. So I think that we should talk at some point about like who might, we might want to be involved, in case there were any trees that were planted that were memorial trees that we would want to look at, but I'm not aware of any at this moment in time.
I just popped into my mind, I don't know, have we designed in display areas within the building, trophy cases in the athletic areas or anything like that?
Yeah, there are display cases.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else on this particular topic?
If we can consider, as we go through this and start thinking about if we're going to be doing unique features or combining memorials or doing something, I believe it's school committee member Lander had also floated different ideas in terms of, and I know we've, or people have done these on previous projects, the most traditional one being like brick walkways where fundraising can occur, but you know, as we look to put together areas or think of that, if there were external funding opportunities for the community to memorialize folks who have, who are currently not memorialized, that we add that to our plans as well as start to investigate potential things such as naming rights, and if we could start looking into that, or if we work those concurrently, if there's an appetite for that, to potentially defer, either defer costs, future costs, future additions, as well as supplement, you know, ongoing renovations.
The other thing that has come up, we haven't talked about in a long time too, would be if there are things in the building that we wanted to have cut up into smaller pieces to sell or things of that nature. So at some point, we need to have those discussions as well.
I feel like that is kind of out of scope from the school building committee as far as our charge goes, but maybe putting together some sort of group, fund, task force, whatever, kind of off to the side around this whole memorials and artifacts piece, I think. It can be, they can report back to us type of thing, but I feel like as far as our group here, we can make sure it stays front of mind, which like I said, is why I keep it as an agenda item, but having a group of people who are interested and want to come together to lead that charge.
I agree.
Awesome. Alright, anybody else on this topic?
Kate, we had talked about the Soravo thing. Do you want me to reach out to them? Because that's, could be possible, like be affected with the road and all that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, at the moment, Phil's clear that the new road isn't going to, it's not going to be in the way, but it is something we want to preserve in whatever way, shape, or form we can, but I would appreciate that if you don't mind taking that.
Okay.
That'd be, thank you very much. Alright, that brings us to discussion item seven, bicycle and e-bike storage. So I've put this on the agenda, so there are two components. One, we want to get an idea at, with our current high school plan, where bike racks, bike storage would be. There is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, kind of pitched an idea of, because the e-bikes are a little bit different because you, they don't, you don't really want to get them drenched. My son has one and he has to backpack, he lugs his battery around with, it's going to rain type of deal. So there are specific structures for protection from the elements, but then also any sort of vandalism that may happen, that's not, that piece is not huge on my list of concerns as much as the storage and keeping them safe and dry. I feel like it's a two-phase component for me, like clearly we need places where people can put their bikes if they come to school. As far as kind of that upper upgraded storage, I feel like that is outside of our scope, but I do want to make sure that we're in sync with the group if they wanted to do any sort of fundraising or grant funding as a separate project, kind of after 2027. I don't think any of our programmatic funds should be deferred to it, but I also want to make sure that there's maybe space that could be like, if you had this at a later date, this would be where it could go, or something to that effect. I don't know, if you have anything, anybody else?
So I'm the BPAC liaison. I wasn't at the last building committee meeting, so Dorothy Hill spoke, who's the chair. They're very passionate about, you know, pedestrian and bicycle access and also just encouraging walkability, and they get that. So with that in mind, I would just say that I don't necessarily know that it is outside the project's scope, but I wouldn't see it as a first priority item. So we've talked about things like solar panels, you know, I think bikes fall on that list, other things that end of project where if we capture some savings and we want to have those discussions later, that's an easy bolt-down item, right? So, you know, I think planning for it's good, and then, but I wouldn't take it off the list because in my experience, things like this get left behind. Like we'll be done with the project and then everyone will like go for a few years, and they'll say, oh, we got to go raise money, and you got this big beautiful high school. So I know that there are advocates in the community, it's, you know, it could be also a policy decision of the council to say at the end of the project, hey, we have some recaptured savings, here's a list of things that were kind of on our hit list, would we want to go ahead and act on these? And so I just, I think that's my take on it, is just don't take it off right now.
And I will say, bike racks are going to be included as part of the site furnishings. So they are being accounted for as part of this. SLAM has identified a little nook under our stair tower where there's a hidden, or a covered area that may be appropriate for storage of e-bikes in poor weather. I think, Kate, you were mentioning earlier, maybe some sort of enclosure that could be a future project for more security, but as part of the project, we will be accounting for bicycle storage in bike racks.
What is the, what's the difference on the enclosure? Is this like a shed or is it an actual?
No, it's actually like a, it's like a, it's a really, it's a, it's pretty. It's like a literal like, it almost looks like a greenhouse for bicycles. Like, it's actual, to protect the e-bikes from the, if all of a sudden it's torrential downpour, you don't want your bike sitting out in that, so, yeah. It would be awesome. I mean, URI does not have it at the moment, you know, and there are a lot of e-bikes over there, so a lot of people have their battery packs, and then they cover their bikes with their raincoats or whatever they use, but, so I think being thoughtful of that. And I like the, that kind of alcove that's under the stair tower, if it gets designated as an e-bike place to park your bike, it will be helpful. But if the, what is it, BPAC, is that the acronym? If BPAC wants a more robust storage, I'll say container really, for lack of a better word, I think then that to me is what I mean, like the upgraded piece. But I like what you have to say is, we have a list at the end of the project, and if we have funds that are available, and what's our priority, solar panel, you know, I don't think e-bike storage is at like number two, but it might be five or something like that, depending on what the town wants.
And BPAC's advisory to council, so they welcome the draft and advisory to council and say, hey, we recommend that you include this as a part of the project, and the council can consider it and give us direction as well, so that's fine.
My glasses on. This may have been discussed before, but I'm not aware, has there been a conversation about how many bikes we would like to plan for? And if not, it's probably a good question to, you know, is it 100, is it 400, is it 800, right?
It's like six.
I know, it's more, that's more kids than you have.
How many kids do we have?
Teachers are riding too. Just in general, site planning wise, there'll be a portion you start with, but to be, you know, to his point, to be able to plan for the future.
Though, right now, I think specific to e-bikes is, if it was, if e-bikes didn't exist, it would probably be not a lot. But now that e-bikes exist, I know, and my son, it went from two to now 10 of them have e-bikes. So they're cheaper than buying cars, and you can get around, like my son rides it to from work, midnight, 1:00 in the morning, he's rolling in on his e-bike. I don't like it, but it happens. But, so, but it's a, it is the reality of our community, so I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question really. Yeah.
Right, right now we don't have a lot. But this is several.
Either.
Either or both. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't plan for it, for a growth down the road.
I would suggest that it's not going to be 400. Pretty sure. Yeah, yeah.
We have lots of people that drive cars.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, more in need for cars than the e-bikes. So, alright, anyone else on that? Alright, our trustee land swap update, Mr. Murray.
So I've been, I'll be completely honest, I've been struggling to get the application done only because of time, but it has, I spoke to you last week about this, it's risen to the level, it needs to be done now. Like I've said before, I was waiting till the start of construction. We're starting construction next month, so it's time to get the application in, and so I've prioritized it on my schedule to get it done. We have the appraisals in place. I actually talked to DM two weeks ago about this, so everything's set to go in. Just got to carve out the time to get it done, so. I'm hopeful that by our next meeting, I'll be able to report that we will have an application in with DM.
Perfect, thank you. Going to have Luke's clone step in and take care of it. Alright, anybody have any comments about land swap update? We have now community comment. We have, I see a community member, if you want to come on up.
Good morning, everyone. Janine Silver Smith, member of the Town Sustainability Committee. My kids went to West Kingston, Mr. Gold, and we used to bond over our love of a certain baseball team that shall go unnamed. Anyhow, I just wanted to say in terms of the bike racks, the solar panels, and also bird-safe glass, I don't know if that's off the table yet, I hope not. Okay, good. But the Sustainability Committee might be an avenue to talk about those things as we get to the end of the project, just to coordinate efforts, looking for, I mean, I don't want to have to look for other funding sources for these things, I hope it can fit into the project, but I'm also realistic about it, but just wanted to offer that as an opportunity because I think these things, as like what Luke said, like I don't want them to get lost. I understand we have a budget, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, discussion action next, school building committee meeting date, time, and agenda items. So as far, I want to kind of jump ahead to agenda item before we talk about the date and time. So the agenda item that I want to make sure, as I kind of talked a little bit with Mr. Lynch, but also I put the bug in Phil's ear already, we really do want to have some sort of update about Curtis Corner Fields, even if it's to say, you know, it'll be on our next agenda item, it'll be on our, you know, once we put the shovels in the ground, then we're focusing on discussing what's going on at the fields. We just want to make sure it doesn't, not that it's going to get forgotten because it's not, but we want to also make sure we're talking about it so that people know it hasn't gotten forgotten. So if we could plan to have something on our next school building committee agenda that specifically talks about the Curtis Corner Fields and the planning around it. Terry, is there anything I missed in what I'm saying?
No, I just get so many questions like, oh, when's that start? When's, I'm like, I'll figure it out. So if we could just get some kind of timeline, and it doesn't have to be obviously exact, but just somewhere in that neighborhood.
As far as the time of the next building committee meeting, we're maintaining the 8:30 a.m. start for our meetings on Thursdays, on the Thursdays through the summer. The date, in theory, we had been meeting the first and third, we are clearly at the second today. Are we planning to, do we need, are we planning to meet on the 17th? We actually have one, two, three, four, five Thursdays in July, so I don't, I feel like these months are kind of screwing up our normal flow here.
So just from room scheduling, logistics standpoint, next week, which would be the 17th, Probate Court is in here early, so there is a conflict.
Okay.
From my world, unless we're going to go to a different day, I would suggest that we go to the 24th.
And that would put you back on, if you went to 24, that would put you back on to the first, when you get to August.
Okay. And also then, is there a town council meeting on the 28th?
Yes.
And do we have a school committee meeting on the 29th? No? Okay. Oh, sweet. Let's keep it that way.
As a reminder to all, there's only one council meeting scheduled, there's a regular meeting in August.
In August, and that's the 12th.
You know, ideally, we're hitting that date for any approvals.
Yep.
But if we need special meetings, I need to know as soon as possible, and Jim needs to know as soon as possible.
Yep. So as of this moment, July 24th, why is that? I think I'm not available, but you guys don't need me because you have Michael. So July 24th, 8:30 here for our next meeting, making sure that the Curtis Corner Field is an agenda item. We will clearly have more. And outside of that, I believe we are at the end of our meeting, and I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our meeting ends at 9:20. Thank you all.